Good evening. We welcome you here to our regular city council meeting of West Valley City. We appreciate your attendance tonight. Our meeting is now called to order and we have a full quorum present. We all made it from our study meeting, so that's great. Tonight, it's my responsibility to have an open ceremony. And several things have been on my mind and I'm going to share. The first one, I think they're ready to do a little video. And they're going to do this. I think it's been done before, but I'm doing it in connection with some events that have recently occurred and then some events that will occur in the future. So for those of you, and many of you in the audience won't know, Kate Smith singing[72.39][72.39]"God Bless America," you will recognize it as being not from last year. Okay? And actually, the place where I saw this was at our senior center, the Harmon Senior Center. And they played it there as part of their Veterans Day program. And since I mentioned Harmon Senior Center, why, we note with sadness, all of you have been informed, the passing of Pete Harmon and his viewing and funeral will be, I guess, this next week. I think I saw an email come in on that, so one of the great contributors to our community and appreciate his life and how it affected our city. I believe that we're getting close to ready, so okay. So we'll do the video.
And now we take great pleasure in presenting to you the star of our program, Miss Kate Smith.
It is my happy privilege to introduce a new song, "God Bless America." (Singing) While storms gather far across the sea, let us wear a leathern to a land that's free. Let us all be graceful on a land that's fair. As we raise our voices in a solemn prayer, God bless America. Land where my love stands beside her and guides her through the night with light from above. From the mountain to the prairie, to the ocean, white with all. God bless America, my home is free. God bless America, land where my love stands beside her and guides her through the night with light from above. From the mountain to the prairie, to the ocean, white with all. God bless America, my home is free.
Right, ma? Right, son. (Singing) God bless America, land where my love stands beside her and guides her through the night with light from above. From the mountain to the prairie, to the ocean, white with all. God bless America. That makes you think of Blake Testan. Makes you think of a lot of things. We're going to end this yet, ma? (Singing) From the mountain to the prairie, to the ocean, white with all.
Hello, son.
Hello, darling.
You have some?
Brand new, first time in here. Very little my eye. You know, I threw that song on a Yip Yip Death Day 22 years ago. Sounds better now.
Specifically, I had a very definite reason I wanted to include this today. One, of course, was that we just celebrated Veterans Day and there were many issues related to that as far as our country. And now, in a couple of days, just two days away, we will be celebrating Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving has been called by some the Great American Holiday. It is a holiday that everyone participates in equally. When we talk about Christmas, there are some, because of their religious beliefs or lack of, do not participate in it. There are other holidays that are somewhat limited in the way that they approach people. Even the Fourth of July for newly arrived immigrants doesn't quite catch them as strongly, perhaps, as Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving, it doesn't matter the religion, the race, the culture, it doesn't matter about anything. All can equally enjoy and participate in it in their own way. And it celebrates it, whether you're having turkey or, as someone told me, they're having enchiladas. And lest you think that that was a family from south of the border, it was a long time Anglo-Saxon, descended from Europe family, and they just wanted to do something different. And it was okay. Whatever your traditions are, the Great American Holiday of Thanksgiving is equally celebrated by all. And certainly, from me as mayor, and I am sure from the council as well, we wish all of our citizens an enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday, whatever their circumstances might be. With that said, I would like to end by having the pledge. But I want to advise you of something that I would suggest that maybe most of you do a little differently. In the pledge of allegiance, and I thank Dr. Bates of Granite School District for informing us of this, the phrase "one nation under God" is a single phrase. There is no comma between it. However, when we repeat it, we always say "one nation," and then we pause, and then we say "under God." To do it the way it was written, it's "one nation under God." And so, however, if you don't do that, that's okay too. It's still valid, whichever way you say it. But I just mentioned that. I thank Dr. Bates for that instruction. So would you stand with me and let's repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. We will now turn to some special recognitions. I believe that we have in the audience a scout troop or something similar. If there is, we would invite one of the scouts to come forward in your troop number, why you're here, and what schools you attend, and we want you to come right up in front. So you have to exit there. We want to get you on the microphone.
Hello. I'm Spencer from Troop 244 of Zentland. We're here for the community citizenship and the community merit badge. Most of us attend Granite School District schools, but I'm in Canyons myself.
Okay. Well, thank you. We welcome you coming here. We hope you'll find it interesting. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Any other scout groups? Ah, we have one more, and he doesn't want to come up. But it's our policy here in city council meetings, not to embarrass, but to invite. We appreciate you coming. If you would just come forward and just tell us your troop number, your school, and I'll bet you're here working on citizenship in the nation. Is that right? Okay.
I'm from Troop 4, and I do homeschool, and I am working on that merit badge.
Okay. Well, great. See, now you brought us something different. We appreciate having students from all areas, not just the schools, but we've had charter schools and now homeschooling as well. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. I believe that the rest of you are here for our agenda, our regular agenda. Now, we have a public comment period, and we have four people who are signed up, but I believe that at least one of those is actually here to comment on an item on our agenda. Public comment period is open to any subject, maximum five minutes. And but on the public hearing, I think Mr. Cunningham, a nice one to clarify, if you're here to speak on application Z-4-2014...
Yes.
Then what we would encourage you to do, you can speak, there will be a public hearing, and we will open that to the public. And I think that's when you would probably want to speak, if that's okay. So we will be opening that public hearing. We actually have three of those. So you'll have a chance to speak on any of those items that are under Section 6 of our hearing or of our meeting tonight. Oh, there he is. Yes, and also, special recognition, before I get to comment period, we do have a representative elect, Fred Cox here. We recognize you tonight, former member of the House of Representatives. Appreciate your joining us tonight. And I believe he's here with a purpose tonight, so. With our comment period, then we will go right into that. We have three people who have signed up, and for the first one on that public comment is Mr. Fred Cox. So if you'll come forward by...
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want name, address, or...
Yes, it's for our written record, and although we may know you, someone looking at this record or listening to it at another time would not know.
Thank you. Fred Cox, 4466 Early Duke Street. I live in West Valley. I just wanted to say thank you for being here. I obviously can't be here all the time, but it's always fun to see what you're working on. I did want to comment about one thing that is apparently coming up in the future, and that is a proposed modification to the use limitations for the CC zone, the city center. And I just wanted to somewhat apologize for it not being on your agenda tonight. I spoke and opposed to some of the modifications a couple of weeks ago. I am working hard to get one of the buildings that's currently boarded up on 35th South across from the hotel open, and one of the modifications would have fixed it so the individual that's leasing the building would not be able to do so. And I just encourage you to start looking at the proposed modifications. Eighty percent of those I certainly agree with, and a number of them, I believe, will help improve your city center caution when they could be possibly used to create monopolies instead of additional variation in what's in the city. And there is, staff is aware of my concern and the particular business in question, and I met with them earlier, and just wanted to encourage you to start looking at that as a policy decision downtown West Valley, which is what we're working to create or you're working to create, is important. And sometimes modifications help and sometimes they don't. So I just encourage you to start looking at what's coming down the pike as far as the CC zone limitations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that then, we now go to Mike Markham.
Mike Markham, 3008 Alice Circle. Just wanted to bring to some of your attention, and I want to thank Councilman Buehler, he kind of supported me in this one time. Has anybody drove down Lancer Way lately at about 3350 West and seen the new subdivision that's going in where we had the eyesore for so many years, the previous owner of the property would do nothing with it? I think it would still be ugly if people hadn't started to speak up to them and get it taken care of. We remember that, that they can be beaten, not into submission, but we can win. Also, I would like to ask Nicole, she was, in the presentation earlier today, was worried about some of the residents on 5600 West, not stepping on their toes and taking care of their property rights and so forth. I'm not quite sure we had those concerns taken when Boy Thorson was taken out of his property where the hotel is. It was kind of either or, you're out of here, you're gone. I attended some of the meetings and had some of his paperwork. So it was kind of, I don't know that we really worried that much about that piece of property, because it's something that the city wanted, so we got it. Also, Mayor, as a veteran of an undeclared war, I'd like to thank you for your presentation today. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Tara Rollins.
I think I'm here for a hearing as well.
A hearing as well? And that would be, is it the same one? Do you know the number, one of those three?
It's a resume.
Okay. All right. Then with that, we will close. Anyone else? We didn't have anyone else, so we'll close the public comment period, and we will turn to our city manager. Any comments from you, Mr. Pile?
No thanks, sir.
Thank you. Then to the council, any comments? And I'll just conclude one. Of course, I liked the veteran, I participated actually in five veterans programs, by the way. One of the great things about being mayor, and they were all fantastic, one at the senior citizens home, three at schools, and then one here at the city offices. We initiated our Veterans Day program here, and so you sure should come next year. We'd like more veterans there. With that then, we now move to the regular part of our agenda on public hearings. We are going to accept public input regarding application SB 1 2014 to vacate a six-foot alley located between lots 36 and 37, 54 and 55, 74 and 75. This over in the Granite Park subdivision at approximately 1930 West, 3255 South. These alleyways were initially put in place many, many years ago. Most of them have been eliminated. There are two of these. One, dead ends, so if you walk down it, it goes nowhere, and it's between a couple of homes. Serves no purpose. The other one actually goes through, but again, really doesn't accomplish anything. After so many years and the alleyway being unused, these two, the proposal is that the city abandon those, in essence, and the land is deeded to the two property owners on either side, splitting the six feet, three feet to each one. And so this is a fairly routine thing. And so what we will do now is open the public hearing portion of our meeting for anyone who would like to speak to this issue. Is there anyone here who's speaking to this issue? Yes, if you would come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Daniel Marty. I live in 1900 West, 3255 South, West Valley. Thank you for having us here. I have seen the areas, and it is commuted daily by children going to the bus stops, including my children as well. The area sadly has been vandalized a few times by graffiti and other people in the area liking to throw garbage in the area. But it is also highly trafficked, used by children to get to the bus stops on a daily basis. So I can see one of them that has a dead end that's not useful, but the one in 3255 South, it's used daily by children for the bus stop.
Okay. Just to clarify a question, you say bus stop, school bus?
Correct, school bus. Yes, used daily by children going back and forth. Instead of having to go all the way around, the children will use it to, as a quick way to go to their houses and to the school bus stops. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? We appreciate the feedback. Then if there are no further public comments, then we will close the public hearing portion on this agenda item, which we call ordinance 14-42, but is for application SB 1-2014. We will close that. The hearing is now closed. We bring it back to the council for comment discussion. To the council, Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, is it possible to bring that up on the screen so that the people here can see it, or we don't have that available?
It should be available to go up on the screen, and certainly on the computer. I think we can't, ma.
I'm sorry, let me...
Bringing this up on the screen so we can show that street and that alleyway is certainly in our...
Sure we can't do that yet.
Yep.
And the reason why I'd like to see it, I mean, if I can see it on mine here, but if this is a usable pathway like we have at other schools, then I would at least like to have a discussion about that way. One of the things we talk about all the time as a council is having walkable communities. And I know we've had some discussions about other small accesses to schools that have been an issue with the way they've been maintained and taken care of, and I'm sure that that's one of the issues with this piece of trail as well. With the resident coming in here and telling us that it's being used as a pathway for the school children to get to the bus, I mean, warrants some discussion.
Okay. Councilwoman Lang.
Well, and if the picture shows, I'm not sure that we have sidewalks in that area, just a gutter next to the roads, so I cut through, but those kids happen to go all the way around. Would probably be a good amenity to leave for them. Last, the dead end one.
No, that's the...
Was that the one that goes all the way?
So there's obviously an issue with care and maintenance of the sidewalk.
Councilwoman Lang, any further?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? Now, I believe that it would be appropriate if on this, that we can split this by motion and have the one approved and the other, you know, held for further study. So further comments? Councilman Rush.
I would just, you know, like to thank those that came to talk tonight, because I was under the impression, yeah, that this was not used at all. And so I think what, you know, I would like to do is obviously close, vacate the dead end portion of the ordinance, amend the ordinance to have it just be the top half, leave the bottom half, and leave that open for the time being, and discuss that at a further date or give us, give it opportunity to look at it more. Well, I will move that we amend ordinance 1442, only vacating the dead end portion, only vacating the dead end portion and leaving the middle through portion open.
Just to clarify, Mr. Pile, is that the portion that is north of 3255 South?
Yes, sir.
So the one south of 3255 South that goes down to 33rd South is the one that cuts through?
Correct.
Just so that it's clear on the record which one we're doing. We have the motion before us, do we have a second?
Mayor, a second motion.
Councilman Buehler has the second. The motion is before us. For the benefit of the public, we have talked about this issue before in our council meeting last week. We had discussion on this and all other items on our agenda, so it's the second time it's before us. But we do appreciate having the public come and participate, and so any further discussion to the motion? Councilman Vincent.
I would just like to add that I am grateful that somebody from the neighborhood did come, because I was prepared to go ahead and vacate this, because we had no idea that it was being used. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Councilman Rush.
I'll just repeat what I said during the study meeting. We talked about this last week, is that, you know, these, I think, are going to come up from time to time, and, you know, there's some people that planned our subdivisions years ago that left spots open for alleyways and trails and connections to backs of schools. And, you know, I know sometimes the council's been split on these, but I think, you know, either you're a city that wants to just be drive up, pull in your garage, and not see anything, or you want to be an open, walkable community. And when, all things being equal, I will always side on keeping it open and walkable, and the rest, the council should too.
Okay. One further comment. There was some discussion that there is some use there, but it was referred to as typically illegal use. There are people of clandestine operations sometimes frequenting that area that was a concern to the neighbors. So there's a couple of issues there, and we will have to figure out that if we don't close it, how do we make it safe for the school children? And so, Councilman Vincent.
And Mayor, to that point, I would, I would hope that the neighborhood would kind of take ownership of this and kind of adopt it, and whether it's a scout troop or a girl scout troop or a... or a church group, that they would, that they would take ownership of making sure that it's kept clean and always passable, and so just to add that.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, then we will place for a vote to consider approving ordinance number 14-42, vacating a six-foot alleyway for the portion north of 3255 South, but not including the portion to the south of 3255 South. So that is the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The portion north of 3255 South is vacated, the other is held, and we'll have further discussion on that, and so please keep an eye on our agenda for when that will come up again. Thank you very much. We'll now move to item 6B. This is to accept, we need to deal with application Z-4-2014 filed by Mr. Cunningham, Jill Cunningham, requesting a zone change from A agricultural to Zone C to general commercial. This is at property located at 2938 South Glen Eagle Drive. And this is related to some parcels that are in the back, kind of off of 5600 West. And it's kind of a little hard to get to, and you have to know where it's at, but this is part of a number of issues coming forward on this property, to consolidate some of these, to change their zoning, to make them more usable. Anyway, with that, anything else we should add in the introduction to that? Yeah, yeah. And so, as far as the introduction of the issue, then we'll conclude with that. We'll now open for public input and hold a public hearing on this application. So anyone here from the public? Do we have more than just the one? With that, we'll invite you to come forward to speak on that item.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council. I'm excited to be here tonight. My name is Joe Cunningham. I live at 4139 South Colt Court, West Valley City, Utah. I don't know that I have a lot to say on the subject unless there's some questions that I could address the council. I did want to say though, a couple things. Seems to me a month or so back, I was in, visiting the planning department on some reason, and Mr. Lehman had asked me if I didn't have something I needed to get through the city or get working on or do something, and I think he's now kind of regretted that comment because I said, "Yeah, I guess I can start doing some things." So we've submitted some things that we needed to clean up that we've kind of sat on for the last few years, and a lot of them dealing like with this commercial property down here where there was, used to be residential houses. We actually had people living back there between DI and the car wash and those things. And over the last few years, we've been able to get them relocated and get it moving forward. So we're always excited to do that, but I did want to thank the planning department, and I think Mr. Pastrick and Mr. Lehman have done a good job, as well as all the rest of the group back there. Kevin, what guys? Pay attention. Okay. So thank you. If there's any questions, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak on this issue? Yes, if you'll come forward and identify yourself.
I'm Joanne Jacobs. I live at 3935 South 6000 West, and I'm just curious, this zoning change, is that underneath the freeway, just off the freeway that's going to be put in there? Where's that property at?
Is this one that we could also get up on the screen so that you can see that? And it will be easier to answer the question with a picture. Now, this is property to the west of 5600 West. To help you locate that, there are, there's a car wash and a business called The Grease Monkey that are west of 5600 West, back in there, and this property sits immediately behind it. And you can see the red box there where it's located. And now this shows you the general area north of 3100 South. The Mountain View Corridor is to the west, or as you're looking at the picture, to the left of it. And so it will not be under it, but to the side of it. Now let's just bring up a little, the next picture, which is a little bit closer view right there. And now you can see the building just to the bottom of your screen is the Deseret Industries. The ones to the right of the red box are The Grease Monkey, and I don't know the name of the car wash, but they're right there. And so it doesn't go all the way back, but the piece we're talking about is actually located right there with this property. That, any further public comment? Seeing no further public comment, we will close the public hearing portion of application I declare the hearing closed. We will now turn to the council to take action. The description on our action is ordinance number 14-43. And so we will now turn to the council for comment, discussion, or action. Let's see, I think Councilman Rushton was first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just can't imagine who would want to vacate the residential property there, as they had all kinds of amenities just right outside their door. But seeing as such, it's, if it's time to move forward, it's progress, ready to move forward, progress, and move that we approve ordinance 14-43.
Councilman Vincent.
Second.
We have the motion properly before us and to consider approving ordinance number 14-43. This is to change the zoning for property at 2938 South Glen Eagles Drive from agricultural to general commercial. Further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we will place at for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 14-43? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion is, passes unanimously and is approved. With that, we now go to 6A, which is another public hearing. This is regarding application GP-1-2014. This is filed by West Valley City, and it is regarding an update to the city's moderate income housing plan. By law, we are required to perform a biennial review of this plan to address a number of issues and to see if the percentage that we have as moderate housing, and moderate housing is defined as those making 80% of the county median household income, or $47,690. And with that, we applied that to the number of housing units that would be affordable to moderate income families, 53.7% of the units here in West Valley. And that is well in excess of the calculated need of 14,000, need of 14,667. So we don't have a requirement to address any moderate housing. We do have more than what is required, so it's kind of a moot issue to some degree, although it's not moot in that we verify and publicly disclose where we are on moderate housing. So for the next five years, we will have more than adequate moderate housing, moderate housing for moderate income families, I think is the way I should state that. So with that, I will declare open the public hearing portion of this application. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? You'll please come forward. Should we introduce yourself?
My name is Tara Rollins, and I work for the Utah Housing Coalition, and our mission is to increase affordable, accessible housing for all Utahns. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we will be speaking across the state about housing that people can afford, so this is our opportunity to do that. I also have brought a latest book that we have produced on housing matters, and it breaks down housing into each county. So I'll hand that out afterwards.
Just give it to our city recorder. She'll see that each of us get a copy, and then she'll also have it for the record. I believe you keep one, but putting her back, so thank you, sorry for that.
So housing people can afford is relevant to all of us, from someone living in a studio apartment to someone living in a mansion. If they are paying more than a third of their income on housing, then they are not living in housing they can afford. This includes gas, electric, and water. When people can afford their housing, it brings stable communities, children can attend schools all year round, and in turn, schools can accelerate. When we talk about affordable housing, most people think, "I don't want those people living in me." We've all been one, and some people will stay as one. Hard-working families and single-parent families deserve a place to live. We need the right inventory for everyone to have a choice, including higher-income households. Look at a daycare worker. They pay 56% of their income to housing, and that's a gap of $329 that could be spent out in the community somewhere else. Most cities have many retail sales clerks and waitresses, they also pay 56% of their income to housing. The person who just gets out of college, how many people know someone that has an adult child living at home? Many cannot afford to pay rent because of student loans, never mind save for a house. A registered nurse will have a surplus of $558, but most likely paying back high student loans. An accountant will also have a surplus, but $407. But again, will have student loans. I wanted to bring perspective to housing people can afford, not just talk about subsidized housing. But would like to put the spectrum of subsidized housing that most people can, that call or that is coined affordable. So a person that is extremely low-income, which is 30% of AMI, which does include the waitress and the daycare worker, they make about $20,000 a year. A lot of those are disabled as well, or senior citizens that are living just on, on social security, excuse me. A person, as you indicated, who is moderate income, they can, they can pay a lot more in rent, but they also do qualify for subsidized housing in many cases. We also have many other subsidized programs that go up to, you know, 120% of AMI. And that is, and statewide is about $80,000 a year. So we do have a quite range of subsidized housing types. I think it's smart to put a hold on rezoning for a period of time. I hope during this time, you'll take a good look at people who are working in your community, bringing in tax revenue, and want them to stay part of the heart of your city. Look at the inventory of safe, decent housing people can afford and plan from there. I understand you have challenged with the housing stock you already have, some neighborhoods very old and need of repair, rehabbed, or taken down. Look at it as an opportunity. Look holistically, not isolated. You have some, you've come a long way from high-vie streets of West Valley. You have many great partners and relationships. Just don't box yourself in and miss an opportunity to stabilize people in the community. We need to think more about housing people can afford, not affordable housing, which is a negative term. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Just one item there, it's a minor correction, but numbers I always like to follow. You said a third, and I believe it's 30%, just a little bit less. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Guidelines for Affordability is that a household should not pay more than 30% of its income for housing. And that would be, on average, given the averages we're using, $1,192 a month. Just so, since this is an official record, we make sure that that's correct. Anyone else here to speak on this? Thank you very much. Then I will declare the public hearing portion of this application closed. Now, for application GP-1-2014, we will turn to the council to discuss whether we will take action on the portion, the way we describe it, ordinance number 14-44, adopting the 2014 moderate income housing plan as part of the West Valley City General Plan. To the council, then. Councilman Buehler.
Thank you, Mayor. According to our inventory, the affordable to moderate income family housing inventory that we have is 53.7%, which is well in excess of the calculated need. And I just wanted to put that on the record, that we are, we have plenty of affordable housing in the city and are certainly compliant. With that, I would move for the adoption of ordinance 14-44.
We have the motion before us to adopt. Do we have a second? Second. Councilman Young has the second. The motion is properly before us. Do we have any further comments or discussion? I think I would mention one thing, as you mentioned, that actually translates into the number of units beyond what we are normally expected to have of some 4,000 units. Actually, West Valley City is one of the destination places for affordable housing. We have traditionally been known as a reasonable area for housing and for rent, as well as homeownership, and that continues to be so. And those, in fact, because of that, that is one of the reasons why we are such a destination place for recent immigrants, because we have affordable housing. So we do have a lot of immigrants in our community and a good place for them to settle. So with that, well, seeing no further discussion, we'll place for a vote ordinance number 14-44 to adopt our moderate income housing plan as a part of our general plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance is approved. We now go to 7A, a resolution. This is to now officially adopt the biennial review of the moderate income housing plan. And this is actually a report that we are required to prepare based upon state law, and so we will adopt that report through this particular resolution. And regarding the resolution, this is 14-187 to adopt it. To the council for any comments or action. Councilman Rushton.
Seeing as how we have one of our legislators in the audience today, we better approve 14-187, and I do so by motion.
Thank you. The motion is properly before us, but the proper designation is legislator-elect. He still has a month to go.
Legislator-elects are usually more troubled than actual legislators, though.
No, not troubled, they're actually more willing to work with us. And having been there, I know that... Do we have a second to the motion? Councilwoman Lang has the second to the motion to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will place the motion, those in favor of approving ordinance number 14-44 to, excuse me, I need to restate that, those in favor of approving resolution dash... need to restate that, those in favor of approving resolution dash fourteen dash one eighty-seven to adopt the biennial review of moderate-income housing plan report, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The report or the resolution is approved. We now move to seven B. This is resolution fourteen dash one eighty-eight. This is to authorize the city to enter into a right-of-way agreement with E and E Investment Company for property located at forty-seven oh one west, twenty-one hundred south. And that means that we will accept a special warranty deed, a grant of temporary construction easement, and a public utility easement. And this will have a fiscal impact. This is in connection with a road that is being built. We will be spending ninety-two thousand dollars. These are state funds approved for this purpose, and we'll accomplish our work on some road that we are, some work to create, that we'll finish the road. Eventually, there's more to be done on it, but it's actually for compensation on about eighteen thousand four hundred square feet of property. So, that is the item before us on resolution fourteen dash one eighty-eight. To the council, then, for any comment or action. Councilman Vincent.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution fourteen one eighty-eight.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Lang has the second. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? And if the scouts think we're moving fast, we actually, this is the second time we've gone through this, so we do talk about it more than just a little bit. In fact, if you had come at four-thirty, right after getting out of school, you would have seen us discuss the stuff we're doing for next week. So with that, seeing no further comment, we will place the motion. All in favor of approving ordinance number fourteen dash, excuse me, yeah, resolution fourteen dash one eighty-seven, one eighty-eight, boy, getting tongue-tied, resolution fourteen dash one eighty-eight to approve a right-of-way easement, special warranty deed, et cetera, at forty-seven oh one west, twenty-one hundred south, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. I don't believe we have a need for a special session, executive session?
No, sir.
Okay. Then with that, anything else from the council? We had a long session before this one. Few things had to be moved to next week, but we'll get caught up next week. You'll all be full of turkey and half asleep, so you won't ask any questions. Probably not. Probably ask more questions. Anyway, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate all of you who came to see our work, and hope that you learned a few things, and look forward to seeing some of you again. With that, to the council, any last motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Councilman Hyun has a motion to adjourn. Non-debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Yes, that's correct. For your information, we do have the Utah Cultural Celebration, well, that's not the right one. We do have another meeting that's not our city council meeting, it's, yeah, Utah Cultural Celebration Center Foundation. Thank you. I almost overlooked it, even though I had it noted here. Do I collect that? Since it's the council, okay. We now call to order the meeting of the Utah Cultural Celebration Center Foundation. This is a group that was formed in connection with our Celebration Center. You're welcome to stay or leave, whatever. We call this meeting to order. We note that all members of the board are now present, and we have before us, and so I declare we have a focal one, okay? Our item on the agenda is a resolution fourteen dash oh one to amend the Articles of Incorporation to amend the composition of the Board of Directors. And I don't have that up in front of me. And so, Mr. Pyle, I'm going to ask you to help me on this, but I didn't, I don't have a copy of it in front of me, unless one of you have a.
It's the actual composition piece you don't have there?
Yeah, it's X, please leave.
It's not with you?
No, that's not with you. It's the actual Articles of Incorporation that we're amending.
Here you go.
Yeah. We're amending the board members. I can speak to it generally. I think this is the meeting where we change it from city council members to appointed members, and we approved those members of that board. And we establish a Board of Directors, and we've determined by ordinance who those will be, and I believe we've identified, was it eight?
Mayor, if you do have any questions, if you'd like to go over more detail of that, we've got Eric here that's able to speak to that.
I don't know that we need a lot of detail. It was just to verify the number of, that we have already approved, that we did, it was ten, okay. That was off, so it was ten. We've approved ten members. The board was initially the city council, but our intent was and has been to change that to an independent board, although there will be two members of the city council who will serve on that board, the other eight, maybe that's where I got the eight from, from the public. And there will be future members added. And so, I believe that our intent here is to amend that so that this new board, as have been appointed and approved, will now become the Board of Directors, and the city council will no longer be, as a group, the board. Did that cover it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so then our, and thank you, that helped a great deal to have that. So, to the council, then, for any comments or action.
Motion to approve resolution fourteen dash one, I mean, zero one.
Thank you. That motion is properly before us by Councilman Hyun. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Nordfeld has the second. The motion is now before us. Any further comment or discussion? Okay. And it's fourteen dash oh one because it's a different committee, right? Their number just consecutively. Okay, then, seeing no further discussion, we'll place the motion for a vote. All those in favor of amending the Articles of Incorporation to amend the composition of the Board of Directors, as we discussed in our meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Again, the motion passes unanimously. The resolution fourteen dash oh one is approved. And I believe that concludes the work in that meeting. With that, then, one more motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilman Hyun has a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We adjourn our validation meeting.